Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it out on a Thursday night. Thank you to Wade for pulling us together and Mary coming out to tie this all again. I just want to, my name's DeWone Lane and I'm running for county commissioner, precinct one. I've lived in Ector. I've lived in Ector about fifteen years now. Through my time in Ector, I've served on the school board for seven and a half years, president of the PTO, and I'm involved in Kiwanis and Bonham and Children's Ministry at my church. I've been all kinds of things with that. I ran our Kiwanis programs, going to youth camp for eight years, and coached youth softball for about eight seasons through Ector Youth Sports. What motivated me to decide to run for county commissioner was the growth that's coming our direction. We've got expansion on 121 and 82, and so our community is starting to grow. I believe that we need to get out in front of the growth as a county, that we need to have some sort of plans for the future. I'm not sure if many of you are aware, but the county doesn't have any type of future plans. We need to make three, five-year, ten-year plans as this growth is coming this way. We need to decide what kind of industry, business that we want to come to our community. We've got budget issues. I'm sure many of you are aware that the deficits that we have were 1.2 million in the red. Recently at Commissioner's Court, when they were going over the January budget, it was expressed that right now we're on target to spend that 1.2 million that's in the red. So we will be taking that money currently out of our contingency funds. We've taken money out of contingency funds for the last several years, and at this rate that we're going, the county could be bankrupt within four years. I believe that if we work with the Chamber, with Bedco, and the other communities, like Savoy City Council, Ector, all of our other communities, to work together to bring industry, not only does that create revenue for our county, but it also creates jobs for our residents. I know many residents that drive to the Metroplex for work, and I really believe that through those things, to create that revenue to offset that deficit. But I also believe as the county, there's a lot of grant programs that we could be participating in that we're not. We need to, at this point, I believe do everything we can to find money that's out there to be able to do the things that we need to do, whether it's fixing roads, providing for the sheriff's department. There's lots of public safety grants that you can get. There's roads for, or grants for roads, bridges, and all kinds of aspects. So I look forward to these next two weeks up to the primary. I've been out at early voting, and it's really exciting as everybody's coming in and voting. And I would just appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Next is Dale McQuin.
Yes. Yeah, I was supposed to say, yes, remind me. I'm an Ectorian and I'm running for precinct one commissioner. And frankly, I just want to give y'all a little bit of background on mine first, because I don't normally put that out there that much. But I grew up in Lubbock, right outside of Lubbock till I was about fourteen. We had 3,000 acres of cotton. We also raised 250 cows. At the time, I was the youngest person to ever take the AI class in Lubbock, which was very interesting. So one of the things was, you know, as far as responsibility, I've had that forever. At eleven, I would leave a truck because you had to go change the water out of pastures every day before and after school. So that's what we did. At fourteen, we moved to East Texas because the cow market crashed. I don't know if y'all remember, but cows went to 20 cents a pound. Nobody survived that deal. So we moved there. I went to work for a dairy at that point. Every day before school and after school, I worked for a dairy. That's what I wanted to do when I got out of high school. So I went to school at Texas Tech, got a degree in agriculture, and went to manage in the dairy at that point. The dairy business crashed right after that. That hasn't been a good thing. The government bought us out, basically, by the dollar I was working for at the time. So that didn't work too well. So I went into construction and did that for about ten years, built houses down in Tyler. Enjoyed it, liked doing it, had the budgets, you know. You had to deal with people and what things were going to cost, and collect from them also at the end. That's a very important part of that process. But at that point, we took, I took a job up here, working for a construction company, and I decided to go back to school, so I got a chemistry degree at that point for me in Texas. Chemistry is a whole lot different than most things. It is a lot of science involved. It is a lot of just math and figuring out, okay, how do things actually work? There's no, there aren't books out there to do all that, but you still have to figure it out. And so I spent the next fifteen, twenty years working for companies that did chemistry. I was a supervisor for a lot of them, frontline supervisor for anywhere between ten and eighty people during that timeframe. That is an interesting job to do also. You have some capacity to do some of the budgets and how things work. You also realize that people are your biggest asset. No matter what happens, people are one of your biggest things that you have to work with. But you need to get some of the right people in there. And for me, I worked for Mary Kay for quite a while, and one of the highlights of that was I was motivation officer for a 750-employee plant for two years. And so I can work with people. I also know that some people don't want to work, and those people need to be gone. And that is possible to do. You don't have to put up with that. And part of my learning on that is you don't have to make everybody happy either. The county does have a budget issue. It has been coming for a long time. A lot of it is, we just want to get along with everybody. You know, we don't want to make waves. That has got to end, guys. If you want to get some change, somebody's not going to be happy at the end of this process, probably. I don't mind making those decisions. It's just going to be part of it. What I would like to see happen is to get us back on a financial track where we can actually do something. Right now, we are going, we're spending so much more money than we bring in that it is really hurting our ability to go out and make long-term plans. We still need to make long-term plans. Ms. Lane is correct. We have no plan for anything. We don't have a plan for next week. And so we do need to get some long-term plans out there, but we've also got to take into account, okay, how much money are we going to have? How much are we going to bring in over time? And with what the state has passed with a 3.5% revenue cap, you can pretty well predict exactly how much money you're going to bring in for the next five years. That is not a difficult thing to do. We are talking about public finances. When eighty percent of your money comes from taxes, that is just part of it. It's a fairly simple thing to do. And so we're going to have to do that. We're going to have to get some of those plans in place. Is it going to be easy? Probably not. Are some people going to be mad at the end? They probably will. But my goal would be to make it better when I leave than it is right now for whoever comes in, that there actually is plans in place, there is some revenue in place, and so they know what they can do going forward. Thank you.
The next candidate is running.
I'm Ronnie Paul. A lot of you know me. I've lived in this county all my life. From the time I was a boy, lived over there about two miles south here. And I love my county. I love the people of Fannin County, and I'm proud to be from Fannin County. In high school, I was probably what you would call an underachiever. I managed to graduate from Bonham High School. I didn't go to college. Went to work right out of school at General Cable, and managed to get in about eleven years there with a lot of layoffs going on. And went to work for GTE in 1983, and then they became Verizon. I've done about thirty-two year career with them. I retired in 2016 when Verizon sold their holdings in Texas, Florida, and California to Frontier. And it didn't look very promising. I was near enough retirement dates that I went ahead and lived. And looking like I've probably made a good decision on that right now. But I wasn't quite ready to quit working. I felt like I had some more good years in me. And we had thrown around the idea of running for commissioner in the years before I retired. So when I heard that Gary Whitlock was not going to run again, I decided I would like to serve the county and get up and go to work again every morning, have something to do. And I'm beginning to get a little excited about it. At times, I've had a little bit of dread about it. People, I've told my friend for commissioner, the biggest response I got was, why in the world do you want to do that? And do you know what you're getting into? And truthfully, I didn't know much. I started going to the Commissioner's Court meetings in April. And as I went to those meetings, and I heard what they were dealing with, and I heard the concerns and complaints, and sometimes the criticism of the citizens of the county, I began to realize more of how heavily they're burdened with the decisions they have to make. And what that caused me to do was begin to pray more about it. As a believer, I believe that the Lord wants us to come to him in prayer. He wants to cast our cares on him. He wants us to care about our fellow man and our county and try to help each other. So now, I'm pretty faithful to praying for the commissioners and the judge and the officials of our county because I see what they're dealing with. My two opposing candidates have made good cases for what the county faces and the fact that we've got big decisions to make in the future, and I'm in pretty strong agreement with them. If there's any way that I differ, I don't know. I would say this. I'm going to continue to focus, I mean, one of my primary focuses will be on county brothers, on gravel brothers and country brothers. And I understand that you immediately, people say, well, that's just hard at it. I know that. There's big decisions to make about business. And for that, I would promise that I would gather all the information that I could. I would seek out wise counsel wherever I can find it, and I'd make an informed decision and a fair decision on anything for citizens of Fannin County. I guess that's about it. I appreciate your vote. I appreciate your consideration. I want a rather strong point, I think, I need to tell you. I read, hear what Dale was saying, there is difficulties in dealing with people and dealing with issues. But I'm a strong believer that the best way forward is to work together with each other, to try to respect each other, and see to it that we treat each other with kindness and decency. And I've seen the times that the commissioners have to sit there in the court, and people come in and in open form, they make some very strong criticisms, and they're very personal sometimes. And our judge is trying to help people not do that so much. I appreciate that. But I believe a strong point of mine would be that I can hear the other fellows complain. I can put myself in their shoes, and I don't take it to heart. I'm not going to walk away angry or bitter. I'm going to try to find answers and try to find solutions for the well-being of the county. I appreciate you taking that in as a Commissioner of Precinct One.
All right, so the next phase is, what we're going to do is we're going to ask questions. And the questions are going to have ninety, ninety seconds on the questions apiece, and we're going to do it a little bit in different order. That way it's kind of fair to everybody. The first question I want to ask, and this will be across all three of us, and this is from the Republican Party point of view, is how do you plan to serve Fannin County Republican Party after you're elected? And what that means is, are you fully on board with the Republican Party in Fannin County?
As far as the Republican Party, one thing that Republicans have done over time, I mean, they've been strong conservatives. Spend money, but don't spend it unless you have to. Have some programs that benefit the citizens, that they're, you know, always look for ways to try to increase the efficiency of those and how they work, but still serve your citizens adequately. And that is one thing that I would like to do. Technology can help us a lot there. We can use that as far as serving the Republican Party. That is definitely what you do is, to me, as a Republican, you don't spend money, you don't have to, and you try to instill something going forward with the rest of the county and the youth that, you know, we've got to do better over time and make that happen. And the Republican Party stands for a lot of things, but to me, those are the most important. You've got to be conservative in what you do, and government should not get larger all the time. Thank you.
So as far as serving the Republican Party, I'm currently a member of the Fannin County Republican Women. I have been for several years. I'm active in my party. I'm currently the, I think, third DP. I don't do political activities. And as far as being a Republican, you know, when I talk to people, one of the questions they ask me are, are you a Republican Republican, or are you a Republican just to get elected? And my response is, I'm a Republican Republican because I believe in less government, lower taxes. I'm pro-life, pro-gun, all those kind of things. And I do believe in our county that it would be great, through our Republican Party, to start some sort of a Young Republican Group to reach out. I know in other counties that they have those groups, and I think that would be a great benefit for us. Thank you.
You probably remember the time when anybody wanted to get elected in Fannin County, it had to be Democrats. I do too. I was a Democrat. I was raised that way. I was told the Democrats for the common man, Republicans for the rich guy. And I believe that. In 1984 was the first time that I voted Republican. Honestly, I was against Ronald Reagan when he was elected, but Ronald Reagan was one of the terms I'm thinking around and made a Republican out of. And I'm very sincere about the Republican philosophy. Small government, limited government, maintaining the rights of people. I appreciate those beliefs. I stand with them. Now, as far as working with the Republican Party, yes, I'll work with anybody, and I'm proud to be a Republican and work with the Republican. I think, though, on a county level, we do a good service if we start looking at each other as Republican and Democrat. In this county, I've got friends and neighbors, and I'm not too much worried about how they vote. I want to be their commissioner. I want to serve them. I want to help them, and I want to get along with them. But yes, in the overall picture, I'm a Republican. On a national level, I'm always Republican, and I can definitely work for the local Republican Party, and I appreciate what they do. Also appreciate the people that volunteer in the Republican Party. Volunteers are very important, and I want to say thanks for those, too.
Okay, so, whoops. The next question is, the position of county commissioner is in a court position in one of the highest faiths in the county. Do you have any other interests that could impede your commissioner duties? To start with, I'm going to toss it.
Do I have any other interests that would impede my duties of being the county commissioner? And that would be no. That would be my full-time job. The county commissioner has a lot of responsibility. It is a full-time job. Managing budget, going to research into ways to find more money for our county, and then also maintaining the roads, working with your crew, going out, identifying your problems on your roads, which, as all of you know, our roads have a lot of problems. So there's a lot of work to be done there, and so that's where all of my time would be spent. Thank you.
Well, as many of you probably know, right now, I run the Chamber of Commerce and I run the Fannin County Wallopers Complex. I am leaving both of those positions on June the 30th. So that is not an issue, and that is common knowledge, and both those boards have been told that. So yes, it would be a full-time job for me. It will be one that I dedicate just as much as I do right now to running those two entities. You know, we do, I do all the budgets. I do all the, a lot of the work. I do a lot of that, involve in that, direct a lot of people, get things done. And so it would be different for me, but it will be a full-time job, and I will dedicate everything I have to doing that for you. Thank you.
I think that question is just nearly perfect for me. Most of you know, some of you know, that after I began to launch for county commissioner, it was pretty heavily involved in it. I was invited to fill in as pastor for a small local church in Sandy Bay, just about a six mile or four mile from here. And I filled in long until late, asked me to take that position all the time. So yes, I have something else to do. But I want to tell you that throughout the years with Verizon, thirty-two years, I was on-call. A lot of times, I was called out in the middle of the night at work. But during that time, I taught Sunday School faithfully, filled in as a pastor sometimes. I was a deacon, and I always managed to accomplish both things. So my feeling on the fact that I'd be pastoring is that it's a strength for me. I don't think there's anything that strengthens me, makes me a better commissioner, better servant of the people, and my faith in the Lord, and staying close to him, close enough to try to minister to other people. So I'm not too worried that that would be a conflict. I believe I can devote all the time and energy for commissioner and do a good job and still maintain my service to the church. Thank you.
All right, so the next question I'll ask is, progress is being made on the courthouse restoration, and the cost is more than planned. What's your plan to complete the restoration?
I tell you, that's a tough question in a way, but I've been encouraged this last week. I think everybody was in a panic mode a few months ago when they realized how much more the courthouse is going to cost than what was projected. And this week, the Commissioner's Court, the county sold bonds to get the 9.9 billion they needed to finish the courthouse. And they got a very favorable rate of 2.19%. And I want to tell you, I keep hearing reports that we're going bankrupt and so forth. You don't get that kind of rate if you're in that bad a shape. So I'm thankful that the money's going to be there, and the commissioners that are on board now are planning on finishing that. And I hope that they do, and I think it would be a blessing and a benefit to the county.
I know out in the community, there's a lot of people that have expressed that they don't think the courthouse should be finished, that they don't, we shouldn't have done a certificate of obligation. I completely disagree. We have a courthouse that's sitting there, space that needs to be utilized. Once the courthouse is complete, I think it's going to be beautiful. And as far as this certificate of obligation that Ronnie was talking about that they passed, when they initially were talking about it, at first, it was they thought it was going to be around three and a quarter percent of interest. And so when they sold, did the bonds on Tuesday, 2.14 was the rate, yeah? 2.14 was the rate, and that's tremendous savings for the citizens. And as growth is moving in, that's going to help them. We've got more tax dollars coming in. That's going to help alleviate some of the pressure on each property owner and make it not so bad to hang back that 9.9 million dollars. Thank you.
Well, as probably many of you know, I do not like doing the courthouse restoration. We're to the step now, though, that it has to be completed. And so my idea was, we need to complete it, but we still don't know what it's finally going to cost us. We have an estimate. And the reason I say that, originally, we thought it was going to cost us 17.5, and now it's 27. So we still don't know. We need to finish that before we start anything else. I don't see how we could borrow any more money or do anything else till we know exactly what that project's going to cost us to finish it out. And so that does need to happen upfront. Yes, we did get a good bond rating as a 2A. We are not a 3A rated. They got us a 2A rated. There is some fear, though, that if we try to go back, we're going to be dropped down to a 1A rating. That is not good. And the reason is, is because we have lost money four of the past six years in the general fund budget, and we will lose over a million dollars this year. We cannot continue on that path, and it will come back to get us at some point. So like I say, we need to finish the project we have right now before we commit any more money to any other projects. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. And along that same lines, the next question is going to be, the restored courthouse will not hold all the offices that we currently have, the government offices. What is your solution to help house the other offices?
As I said, I don't think we need to borrow any more money right now. We did have the opportunity to probably rent a building, though, for a little while that would have put a lot of the people back into it, and the current commissioners have passed on that to this point. That building is now basically a third taken off the market because someone else is taking that building over right now. So as far as trying to find someplace else for them to go, we definitely need to do that. It may not be the nicest, though. Frankly, you may be in the same building you're in for a little while longer until we can get our finances under control and actually go out and try to buy something that we can convert or actually commit the funds to build something that will last us not just for the next few years, but probably for the next twenty years. Even if something, we can build something, and we can add on to over time. But that requires a plan. We need to know exactly how many people can go back in. What is the best way, we might be able to consolidate somewhere they're at now to where it's the best places for them also. But that will require a plan to do, and we just frankly don't not have anything to tell us that at this point. Thank you.
I agree with Dale. I'd be a little reluctant to make projections or policies on what we might do for the justice center, although I agree it's much needed. I really don't know what existing plans are for the courthouse. I would be in favor of trying to put everything into it that we can reasonably to use it up as much as we can, not just have it like a museum. But we do have to have a space for everybody to be. And we're going to have to be, think about it, have to be patient with each other, probably, and work at it to still get through the courthouse issue, get that for itself, and know what it costs. And then we can begin to think about something that might cost us a pretty good amount of justice.
So no, everybody's not going to be able to move back into the courthouse because of size, because now it's actually going to be smaller once the renovation is complete. So we're going to have to figure something out. There is no money right now to, for a justice center. I know there's been a lot of conversations. I know there's a committee for a justice center. But currently, it's not going to happen. I think that right now, a lot of the, some of the people that are out of the courthouse, I think will wind up staying possibly where they're currently at until some other arrangement can be made someplace else. I think the building that Dale was speaking about, that they had talked about many months ago to possibly use, I think that would have been great because then everybody would be right there on the square at the courthouse. But unfortunately, that didn't work out because the current commissioners, they didn't want to go into an endeavor with an old building like they're experiencing with the courthouse right now. So it's certainly something that's going to have to be looked at because it's needed. But unfortunately, I think it's going to be a couple of years out, if not several. Thank you.
Okay, the next question, this was submitted. What will, what will you support to promote industrial development in Fannin County, especially in Precinct One? Are there any possibilities other than sand mining? And what, where?
I don't know. You submitted that question, but that's a hard one. Oh, you did? Oh, my gosh. Well, I think there's always opportunities out there. You know, we just need to find ways to sell our county to break business here. I know that there's been discussions, people have asked me about the railroad, to use that to break business, but that's going to cost so much money that nobody's going to invest in that. I know BPG said that besides them currently, they don't know of any other business here that would need to use the railroad, and I've heard estimates from two to four million dollars to do that. But I know that we have things here that, you know, we can work with Bedco. I know that they have had businesses come here, but for one reason or another, we haven't been able to work things out, and they've ended up leasing. and they ended up leaving our county. Uh, so I think that we just need to get together, try to work, uh, more, and whatever those differences are, maybe we can compromise a little bit with some of these companies. I know money has been an issue, but, you know, you got to spend some to make some. Uh, and if we can spend a little bit of money to get a business to come out here and create jobs, uh, that'll, that'll help us all in the long run.
As far as economic development, precinct one, the railroad is correct in some respects, but I think we need to be working with Rising County on that. We're not going to get the railroad into Bonn, Texas. We've got it to Savoy, though. So if we can work with them to maybe have a transload facility or something out there to where somebody could use it, or it's closer to eighty-two there, we might be able to get a plan out there. The number one thing for anything by coming in right now, though, is there's not much water in Fannin County. It's kind of amazing. We've got two great big lakes going in, but most all the rural water supplies can't service any more customers. That is a problem, and it's not that they can't service them with water, they don't have the infrastructure to do it. The pipes aren't big enough in the ground and so forth. So we're going to have to look at that as a county to try to get that going a little more, and that may be looking at trying to help them get some grants to do some things so they can increase their infrastructure to where we can actually bring a business in that may use some, uh, industry or use some water or whatever, that they can do that. And that is one thing that the precinct commissioners can look at. They can help when doing some of that. But there is an opportunity to have some growth for industrial. But it's probably going to have to be limited to a small area because we're going to have to commit a lot of resources to get that in for their infrastructure to actually support something like that. Thank you.
Uh, I always figured that growth in the industry was predominantly the, the area of the city. And I know our city has some organizations working on that. Uh, I've recently spoken with the city councilman, and he was concerned about the commissioners working more cooperatively and closely with the city. And, uh, I agree that, that we need to do that. The main thing the commissioners, I would say, we don't want to do is, we don't want to stand in the way of somebody coming in, into the company. We'd like to think ahead. If there are things that we can facilitate, we can make it more likely to happen to be doing that. It's possible that there may be some things that could happen around the new lakes that might be beneficial to the county. I don't, I don't really see any great industry there, but yes, this county needs industry. And, uh, as a commissioner, if there was any way I could help work toward that, I would be doing that and trying to find ways for it. Thank you.
So at this time, we have about approximately thirty minutes left. So what I'm going to do is probably switch over to the sheriff's office, and then we'll have closing statements again if you're right now. Okay, so if the sheriffs will speak in this order...